I'll never let you go. Why? Because I love you. I'll always love you so. Why? Because you love me. No broken hearts for us, because we love each other.
I'll call the September 23, 2008 City Council Study Session to order. Roll call, please.
The record will show that all council members are present except for Councilmember Rozansky and Councilmember Webb.
Okay. First item of business is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner? Councilman Curry?
Nothing.
Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Mayor Protim Dagel?
I have none.
And I have nothing. That's the record. Next item is presentation by OCTA on the SR-55 access study.
Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, as you're probably aware, the State Route 55 access study is a cooperative effort between OCTA, Costa Mesa, and the City of Newport Beach, as well as Caltrans, to identify potential alternatives to address congestion issues within the State Route 55 Newport Boulevard area and adjacent areas. As you're probably aware, Councilmen Rozansky and Webb are the -- serve on the elected officials committee in this study. It's unfortunate they're not here yet, but...
Maybe they know it already.
They know it already, that's right. And Tony Bryne, our city traffic engineer, and myself are -- serve on the technical advisory committee, and we meet with all the parties and discuss. So today, with us this afternoon, we have some members from OCTA. Michael Litschi, who's a project manager for OCTA for this project. Sarah Swenson, also with OCTA on the community outreach. Tony Petros with LSA Associates, who's our technical consultant, project manager. And also with us today is Glenn Campbell with OCTA. Or actually, I think he's actually retired, but they keep bringing him back. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you. Yeah, we can't do without Glenn. And you got the last name right. That's a good start. It's tough to do. Good afternoon. I'm Michael Litschi, section manager in OCTA's Transportation Planning Department. And Mr. Mayor, council members, we're happy to be here today to present to you an update on the findings of our State Route 55 access study. When we were last before the council back in February, we provided an overview of the study and a summary of our draft transportation alternatives. Since that time, OCTA has conducted a number of public meetings and open houses to collect public input on the draft alternatives and also the overall transportation issues in the corridor. As a quick background, you might recall that OCTA started the State Route 55 access study back in May of 2007 in order to explore some alternatives to the current Caltrans plan on the books that would extend the 55 freeway from 19th Street to Industrial Way. For the past year, OCTA has worked closely with your city, as well as Caltrans, the City of Costa Mesa, to move the study forward. And the study's really looking at how to solve two major transportation problems in the area. The first is how to ease the chronic congestion that we see where the southbound 55 currently ends at 19th Street. But just as importantly, we're looking at how to reduce or eliminate the cut-through traffic that occurs on local streets because of that bottleneck on the 55. This next slide here just gives you a summary of the study purpose, and that includes many of the issues and concerns we've heard from community members during our public outreach process. And the alternatives we'll be presenting to you in just a few minutes were analyzed based on how well they accomplish the goals presented here. And before we go into the alternatives, I want to stress that what the alternatives you'll see tonight are the result of just the first phase of a multi-phase study. Once we reach consensus on these initial strategies, we'll go back and do some more detailed technical analysis and also some additional community outreach, so that we can move forward with a locally preferred strategy for the corridor. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah Swenson, who will give you a summary of our public outreach efforts to date, and she'll be followed by Tony Petros of LSA, who will walk you through the technical alternatives that we're recommending.
Good afternoon. All right, since our study began in May of last year, we've held two stakeholder meetings, one in each city, Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, and we shared our purpose and need statement with this group and discussed some of the major concerns that we had with any traffic and congestion issues. So with that information and the technical work, we were able to develop the initial set of transportation alternatives for the study. From that point, we developed a comprehensive website, which includes an explanation of each of the alternatives, a glossary to explain some of the technical jargon, and an online survey. And since we've launched that website, we've had nearly 3,000 hits on all of these pages, and more than 350 people have taken our online survey. We also included a section on the website that allowed anyone interested in the study to add themselves to our contact list, and this has generated more than 150 new contacts for the study. We also created an e-newsletter to share information about the study and publicize the open houses that we had planned. We distributed the e-newsletter to 350 people, and we also created a hard copy direct mail piece with the same information that was distributed to 35,000 Costa Mesa and Newport Beach residents. Included in the mail piece was a response card, and this allowed the public to share their thoughts about the study and some of the challenges that they faced within the corridor. And since those were mailed out in March, we've received more than 400 responses back. We also utilized local publications to increase awareness about the study, and the study's actually been featured in The Register, The Daily Pilot, KOCE, and KDOC-TV. And to date, nearly 20 stories have ran in these publications. And finally, our open houses, we held three, two in Costa Mesa and one in Newport Beach, and we had an overwhelming turnout with more than 275 people in attendance. Which brings us to our next slide. At each of the open house, we printed the alternatives on display boards and had them and distributed green and red dots to each of the people who attended the meeting. And that way, they could go around the room and actually physically illustrate by putting a red or green dot on the board to illustrate which they favored or opposed. So as you can see in this photo, a community member is showing -- is looking at the current freeway plan, and there are a lot of red dots, which kind of shows some opposition towards this alternative. The information we received from the open house, the online survey, and emails and phone calls that I received from the community have all been evaluated and integrated with our technical analysis of the study. But a consensus from the community has shown that the cut-and-cover alternative is the most preferred, and coming in at second is the no-build baseline alternative. Results from our online survey and response cards revealed that signal synchronization may be a short-term solution to improve traffic flow along Newport Boulevard and within the study area, and a concern for -- from the majority of the community continues to be cut-through traffic primarily during the weekend and the summer months. And I think one of the biggest questions for not only you and the community, but -- which was illustrated for us as a study team, was illustrated in our outreach efforts, and that's what's next? What are the next steps after this study? People are concerned with the costs of the alternatives and where the funding may come from, and definitely the scheduling of what construction for each alternative, how long it would take. So as we're approaching the conclusion of the study, the concerns -- these concerns will be addressed in further detail and in subsequent phases. So with that, Tony will give you an explanation on the alternatives.
Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Tony Petros, the principal with LSA Associates. One item that I want you to come away from this is that this is really about process more than product here. There's been a great deal of effort on behalf of OCTA and the team to make sure that we hear from the community what the issues are and try and frame that in a set of alternatives to then vet within the technical advisory committee, the elected officials, and the public in general. The outcome of this is really to rule out those alternatives that simply don't have any merit and to move forward with a series of alternatives that achieve some level of congestion relief and achieve some of the other items that has already been brought before you. To that end, we originally started with eight different alternatives, which were winnowed down even further to come out with, I believe, six that we actually went through the entire evaluation process. The first being a no-build, a baseline condition. If we do nothing but that which has been funded and planned for today and project traffic and growth and just growth in the region out, what happens? The next alternative to be looked at is, well, what if you implement the current plan? What are the effects of doing the freeway plan as it is currently proposed and has been evaluated in an EIS? Taking a step back, are there fixes that we can do simply and eke out as much capacity as we can in the existing system? In doing so, we might suggest an additional lane on Newport Boulevard heading southbound to balance the four northbound that are planned to provide four southbound. Bus turnouts along Newport Boulevard, does that help at all? Does signal synchronization and getting better traffic progression achieve any measurable end there? As we move on in the alternatives, now we start to get into some of the more heavy-duty alternatives. And one thought was, if the issue is at the two terminal ends of 19th and Newport and the very busy intersection of 17th and Newport, if we address those two terminal ends, can we get flow going through the corridor? So it's on the end of the garden hose, if we just make the pipe a little bit bigger, will the hose carry more traffic? And then, if that doesn't work, then do we need to literally separate the traffic? That which is destined for the area versus that which has a destination either up the 55 or further south towards PCH? And there were two ways to look at this. One, separate it by a typical -- via a duct. Put that through traffic in the air on a structure on a much smaller scale, but to the 110 freeway as you head up towards Los Angeles. The other, which has been referred to as the cut-and-cover, puts that traffic underneath in a subterranean structure that is carved out in sections and then covered. Put the road back on top of it, you minimize certain right-of-way effects that might come from something as large as a major freeway. These were the alternatives that when we heard what the public was saying and wanted out of this, when we brought that to the technical advisory committee and also heard from the elected officials, kind of captured the universe of alternatives at that time for -- to evaluate. The way that that was done was to take a look at what would be some reasonable criteria to evaluate these against. And they range from your -- the typical operations and performance standards, the levels of service, the flow, traffic flow along the corridor, and in a study area that goes from Victoria Street to the north, the San Ana River to the west, Coast Highway to the south, and the bay to the east. We also, though, look at other things like the economic development and social demands, the whole thing of cut-through traffic and the effect on the neighborhoods, both on the east side of Costa Mesa, but also in the Newport Heights area, and as you move down further south into Newport Beach. And then finally, and probably most importantly, feasibility. Are these constructible? Can you actually garner the funding to move forward and construct these? Each one of these criteria is detailed in the draft final study that's now before OCTA and your technical officials. And so when I talk about these, I'm speaking of them very quickly in the interest of time, but there is a full and complete analysis of 40 intersections in the study area and the entire corridor from an operation standpoint, but also looking at neighborhood issues on a much more detailed basis and quantitative basis, too. We took a page from your Consumer Digest type of array and looked at an evaluation matrix that took each one of those criteria, evaluated against each of the alternatives, and said, did that alternative fully achieve the criteria, partially, or fail to achieve it? We tried to keep it as binary as possible to rule out a lot of the personal interpretations and just say yes or no. Did it or did it not? And this is really the summary of the overall study as proposed today. And what that comes -- oh, one of the other things that we looked at, though, were some key indicators of success of the alternatives, one of which is just the hours of delay that are experienced along the corridor and within the overall study area. And you can see that while the current freeway plan has a very significant reduction in delay through the corridor, so do the elevated or the cut-and-cover alternative with what we found much less of a neighborhood and environmental effect than the current freeway plan. What did we come up with then, and what is this study recommending? At this point, what we are suggesting is that alternatives that should move forward into the next phase, where a locally preferred alternative would be selected, include the no-build baseline. We have to have that in there, number one, just to evaluate any other alternative against it. But it also rose in some of the community's mind as something that might be the solution. Don't do anything. And just live with the congestion at the expense of not having to deal with the community issues. We're also are suggesting that the -- in the meantime, that those items like signal synchronization, like bus turnouts, and some of the simpler fixes should be pursued now and in a short term, five-to-seven-year horizon. As we move, though, into the future, that -- the traffic that we're forecasting into 2030 just is too great for those simple fixes, and something must be done. And we're suggesting that the two alternatives, the terminal enhancements at the two ends or the cut-and-cover alternative, be moved forward and a much, much more detailed environmental and technical analysis be conducted for that. What we also heard, specifically from your staff and your colleagues, is that the final alternative might not be just one of these, but might in fact be a hybrid. That there were elements of the array of alternatives that really spoke to individual items, such as a pedestrian overcrossing over Newport and the benefits it has to safety and just the accessibility through the area, might fit in nicely with the cut-and-cover. Other considerations that we looked at and heard from the community were shuttle services from the northern end of the Newport corridor down to the beach during the summer and seasonal times. There was also the notion that if there is a tunnel ever constructed or a place where a separated facility would daylight down further south, that we really look at addressing any queuing that would happen there, as it does now up the 55 at its current end at 19th Street. And then finally, our view of this was from a typical weekday operations. It's understood that the traffic is much, much worse during the holidays and during summer, and any subsequent study really ought to take that into account as well. There were a number of options that were just rejected out of course. There was some talk about, instead of doing a cut-and-cover, bore the tunnel with a boring machine. And just the size and scale of that type of operation isn't in keeping with the short distance that we're talking about here. There's also soils issues and utility issues that make that undesirable. Reversible lanes, well, unfortunately, even though it may seem counterintuitive, the directional split along Newport Boulevard is more even than you would think. Yes, there's a morning flow to the north and an evening flow to the south, but there's still in the other direction enough traffic to say that reversible lanes just won't work right now. And then finally, was there -- were there opportunities for one-way couplets or parallel routes? And right now, that the circulation system out there really doesn't lend itself to those solutions. So we're moving -- we are recommending a certain array to move forward. We've looked at that whole universe and ruled some out. We're now wrapping this part of the analysis up, and I'll turn it back to Michael to talk about what the next steps will be.
Thanks, Tony. Before I get into the next steps, we add an additional slide here because we were asked by the city to look at, as part of this study, what would the differences be with each of the alternatives with and without the 19th Street Bridge that's currently on the master plan of our T-2 highway? So what we did here, rather than showing you every alternative, is we did the lower-end alternative one is basically the no-build alternative. Alternative seven is the cut-and-cover, the higher-end alternative that Tony was just talking about. And there's a lot of numbers on this page, but basically what it's showing you is that if you do not have the 19th -- I should say, this is looking at traffic volumes in 2030 on PCH at the San Ana River. And basically what it shows is that if you do not build the 19th Street Bridge, then you really don't see much of a difference at all in traffic volumes on PCH, whether you have the do-nothing alternative or the higher-end cut-and-cover tunnel alternative that would extend the freeway to Industrial Way. When you add in the 19th Street Bridge, you do see a little more of a difference between the do-nothing alternative and the cut-and-cover alternative. You see a little bit of an increase in traffic on PCH when you have the cut-and-cover alternative compared to the no-build alternative, although the percentages there underneath show that you see an overall reduction in traffic because now you have 19th Street as a alternate route to PCH. But basically, you do see a little bit of an increase in traffic on PCH with cut-and-cover as opposed to the no-build, because you're actually, with the 19th Street Bridge, taking a little more traffic off the 55 and making it operate more efficiently, so it's drawing more traffic onto the 55. So again, that was just kind of to address the city's question about what role would the 19th Street Bridge play in these alternatives.
Well, what's important to notice is that if you don't build the bridge, you need to have one or at least one and a half to two lanes more capacity on the Coast Highway than if you do build the bridge. In other words, you've added, without the bridge, you have about, it looks like, 2,000 vehicles more.
Right. Yeah, you're seeing a big reduction.
This helps support the need for that bridge.
That's right, yeah. And again, I mean, this was just to kind of show how that interplays with the alternatives in this study, and you kind of see it doesn't have a real, real big impact either way. I mean, they're kind of separate issues, but definitely to your point, you can clearly see if you do have the 19th Street Bridge that you'll have a reduction in traffic on PCH.
It potentially can bleed off traffic from Newport Boulevard, too.
Right. In terms of next steps, we'll be taking the same presentation to the OCTA Board of Directors next month, and basically, the purpose of that is to get their approval of the same alternatives that we're presenting to you. We're not asking them to pick an individual alternative to say that they want, you know, alternative one versus alternative seven, but as Tony said, just to approve, moving forward, the reduced set of alternative -- alternatives that we've presented to you today for further study. And if they do approve those alternatives, then we'll be working with your city, as well as City of Costa Mesa and Caltrans, to develop a scope and budget for the next phase of the study, where we do some more detailed technical analysis on those alternatives and move them forward and try and get to a locally preferred strategy for this quarter. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Which alternatives are you going to do more study on?
Let me go back to that. The recommended alternatives up there are the reduced set. So basically, the no-build alternative, which as Tony mentioned, we have to always have anyway as a way to compare the other alternatives against, but also there is some support in the community for doing nothing. The terminal enhancement is basically trying to add capacity, separate the traffic flow at the busier interchanges along Newport Boulevard. Cut-and-cover tunnel would extend the 55 from 19th Street -- I'm sorry, yeah, 19th Street to Industrial Way. And the transportation systems management is basically recommended as kind of a short-term solution, regardless of what other alternatives are selected to use traffic in the short term. In the long term, it really won't do much to improve traffic flow, but it will provide some short-term traffic relief. So really, the no-build, the terminal enhancement, and the cut-and-cover are the three major alternatives we're recommending for further study.
Then you're also leaving it open to do hybrids of those four or three, I guess?
Right, yeah. That we could combine aspects of the terminal enhancement or transportation systems management, or there may be other issues, such as the ones presented below, that would be added in to create a hybrid alternative.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Two questions. The terminal enhancement, as described by Tony, is like making your hose bigger at both ends. And I get that, but unless I put little holes along the way, I still end up, it seems to me, with a problem at the end. I just moved it. I mean, and I saw that there was some concern about that, but I wasn't -- is there a way that you can design it in some way that that doesn't happen, or is that just? I get -- my big concern is, okay, and I'm sympathetic with Costa Mesa, and that is a -- I mean, nobody likes to drive there in the summer along that one stretch, but is there in any of these things something that's not going to just end up pushing the problem farther down and pushing it even more into Newport Beach neighborhoods?
Councilmember Gardner, that's a very, very good question. And unfortunately, I'm not going to have a very good answer for you. The current freeway plan, the one that has been approved and blessed by both communities and is now on the books in Caltrans, showed that, in fact, traffic would be pushed down as it came further south. Not to the degree that it is as it stops at 19th, because that 19th area is a destination in and of itself, so there was a large hunk of the traffic that is destined for the downtown Costa Mesa area. But what we do find, and it is profiled in the study, is that if you move forward with the current plan, traffic will move further south, and there are increases planned in traffic if you do the current freeway. The only alternative that doesn't have that as one of the byproducts is do nothing. Then you keep the jam where it currently is, and it will get worse, and it will spread into those neighborhoods in the Costa Mesa area. What we're trying to do here is to say, if this intersection at 17th and Newport is congested, three left-turn lanes in one approach, and if this 19th intersection is congested, can we do things like a simple braid, a small flyover here, to come around and reduce the demand for right turns? Do that same thing here. But you bring up a very good point. The ends, while we may fix the ends, there's still a lot of friction that goes on in the center of the corridor that would keep the congestion somewhat high. What was found was that, well, if we even looked at things like as a hybrid, rethinking this whole system here and maybe create a new intersection, or just another new intersection there, does that as a hybrid provide some type of relief? So this was -- is more conceptual at this point, but to your point, unfortunately, if you move forward with the current plans, you are going to have that effect. Any other plan will have some of that. It's quantified in the study. The only one that doesn't is if you don't do anything.
Let's go a step further. The existing plan has off-ramps at 19th Street and has off -- I mean, not off-ramps, but off-ramps at 17th Street, which allows people to get on and off. The cut-and-cover doesn't.
Right.
Now, are you telling me, then, that if, as long as we don't have that off-ramp on 17th Street, that the cut-and-cover might have a greater congestion at the end than the existing plan?
That...
Because you have one less ability to be able to get off.
That -- I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Webb, but unfortunately, that's not borne out, at least in the forecasts that were provided. And why? Because you still will have the ability to gain access to the local street system at 19th Street in that cut-and-cover and up at Victoria, and you'll have the complete and full set of Newport Boulevard intersections to circulate in and around there.
That's only if you know that you're supposed to get off and take Newport Boulevard back bef -- well, we're Fairview, and you start planning. But at least before, when you had the existing plan, you had your sign that says, get off at 17th Street up here another mile, and you were able to do it. You didn't have to, oops, I forgot it this time, I guess I'm stuck in the jam at Newport.
There may be some of that, but it is so de minimis, because, again, I can use this, and you're talking a distance of under a mile.
Okay. The other thing, as far as this alternative is concerned, I know that at several of our meetings, I've... of our meetings, I've suggested to review in more detail having this ramp drop down in the middle of the street rather than interrupting the businesses on there, as well as this dropping down in the middle of the freeway as opposed to interrupting the businesses there. And I think that you were going to look at that further.
We, yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
I know it's not part of a Caltrans standard, but...
And in fact, you're anticipating where I was going to go, because the one meeting that we did, I did bring a little more to it. Our friends from the local district were there. And we will have a much lengthier discussion with them if that was something that we wanted to move forward with.
There's any number of freeway-to-freeway connections where they drop them down on the inside rather than the outside.
Yeah, good point.
Counselor?
I guess I have a concern because of this, you know, moving the rat farther down the snake here toward Newport Beach. And so, the rat comes out of the snake right at Industrial Boulevard, right? And so, my concern is that that could place significant funding requirements on Newport Beach for improvements to that whole area in order to be able to better handle that movement of that congestion. Does the funding plan for this contemplate more money for Newport Beach to be able to address that problem in association with this? Or does the funding plan stop at Industrial Boulevard?
To answer your question, Councilmember, for one thing, there really isn't a funding plan yet in place because we haven't gotten to the point of picking a locally preferred strategy. So, next phase of the study would look more at costs and more detailed technical information. So that's the point where we'd get into that kind of analysis. The other thing I should mention is that, based on our traffic modeling, it shows that the majority of the traffic that's on Newport Boulevard, about 70%, actually peels off north of Industrial Way. So, you know, anything you do to the 55 will obviously affect the areas downstream, but the majority of the traffic, according to the modeling, is actually not destined south of Industrial Way.
When you do your modeling for summer and summer weekends?
Right.
You're going to find a much different answer to that question.
Yeah, right.
And to your point, Councilmember Hen, the study itself does make recommendations in the current freeway plan, in any one of the cut and cover, the viaduct, any one of the alternatives that showed that there would be a change in traffic at the southern end, that the next phase of the study has to look at that and come up with recommended fixes for any issues that are down there.
And includes, and being included then in the funding plan that's ultimately determined?
Yes.
For Tim Diggan?
I just can't let what you just said rest.
I figured that there would be some...
You mentioned that at least 70% of the traffic peels off before it gets to Industrial Way. How does that happen if you're in a cut and cover, and once you get on, you can't get off?
Well, in that case, because the cut and cover would be an expressway, as Tony mentioned, and you're relying on signage to educate people, but if you're going somewhere north of Industrial Way, you would have to take Newport Boulevard rather than the cut and cover.
Mile and a half up the road.
That's true, yeah.
Glenn Campbell, formerly of OCTA, and I guess still partially. What the 70% is referring to is, we looked at the traffic that was at the approach like at the end of the freeway, and we wanted to see what happened to the people at that point. And so, we followed just that traffic. We weren't looking at the rest of the traffic that was added to Newport as you went further on south. It was simply the traffic that was at the end of the freeway. And what was referring to was that between 60 and 70% of it appears to split off by the time you're south of the Costa Mesa city limit. You then, there's obviously traffic that's added within that area, so the overall traffic is still relatively high. But we were talking about just the traffic that was actually at the end of the freeway and what happens. The cut and cover tunnel was designed to take that traffic, that share of it, that was destined for Newport and further, to get it through that center area and let Newport handle the local traffic. And that was what that number was reflecting.
Yeah, I should have been more specific on that. Thank you for clarifying that.
They've looked at the state transportation bond funds, and they found that 60% of every dollar is being used for upfront costs, environmental studies, right-of-way acquisition, public relations, and 40% for construction. So when you look at cut and cover, for that kind of intrusion into the land, what kind of upfront time period are you think is realistic?
I mean, in terms of going through an environmental process, and you're talking about how long to actually start construction?
Yeah.
I would...
We were looking on the order of 10, 15 years to actually advance something like that. And there are some estimates, very, very rough order of magnitude estimates of cost in the document that will also weigh into all those decisions. But, no, this is the very, the first baby step of a marathon.
I've got a couple more questions. I know you don't know what the cost of this is, but do you have an idea of the current freeway plan versus the cut and cover? Like, I assume the cut and cover is more expensive, so is it one and a half times the current plan, two times the plan? Any idea of the magnitude we're talking about here?
Yeah, if you'll indulge me just a quick moment, I can find that. The cut and cover order of magnitude for the construction of right-of-way was estimated at a cost greater than about $200 million. The current freeway order of magnitude that was shown in the '84 EIS and inflated to current dollars was greater than $500 million. Cost being a lot in bridging, ramping, that, those facilities.
So the current freeway plan's more than two to one?
Almost two to one.
Right of way?
Yeah, at right-of-way. You're talking almost 90, 90 homes, a whole host of businesses.
Okay. And then, what, I think I can guess, but what are the stated reasons that the people in Costa Mesa don't want to go with the current freeway plan?
The notion of the environmental impacts as it, the plan actually doesn't stay in the current alignment of Newport Boulevard. It actually, when it at 19th Street or before 19th, it makes a jog to the east and would take out the homes and the businesses along this area, all the way down to where it would terminate south of 17th Street. It's this intrusion into the fabric of the neighborhoods that has stood out as their greatest opposition to the current freeway plan.
From what standpoint? That it's dividing the city or taking homes, or what?
Yes, dividing the city, taking homes, making the accessibility across, you know, east-west more difficult. These were all the reasons that were given in the meetings that were held.
Which is basically the situation they have with the rest of 55 all the way back?
Well, no, back, that was, at that time, it was the San Ana River, prehistorically, right?
No, not...
I mean, it was, it was a...
That was, that was cut. That was all filled, taken out.
Yeah, there was a nursery down in the bottom there. So, there wasn't many structures that were removed to put that freeway in.
But still, it divides the city. You have limited access on going on each side of the city over there. And I take it that the current freeway plan and the cut and cover plan, the effects that it has on Newport Beach are essentially the same, or they...
That's correct.
Is the current freeway plan less impactful because, as Councilman Webb has pointed out, you have many more opportunities to have different choices as opposed to having to make your one decision at 19th, and then you're stuck in the tunnel to the end where, under the current freeway plan, you have some other choices, it seems?
You have one other choice at 17th. So there's not many more choices. And in fact, the results of the study show that the effects are within a very, very small margin of the same.
And what about, if you go with the cut and cover plan, what about the impacts of handling the traffic while it's under construction? How does that weigh in the thing? It seems that the current freeway plan is much less impactful to the flow of traffic during construction, which I would think would be a long period of time.
By virtue of doing the cut and cover instead of a bore, you can trench half of the facility while keeping the Newport open, and then have this start, and then complete the construction on the other side. So, it would have, it would be a long construction period, but it would be less impactful because you're keeping it within the exist, or for the most part, the attempt is, keep it within the existing right-of-way.
Yeah, but the Newport Boulevard you can keep in place is going to be somewhere between 30 and 50% capacity.
That's, that's correct.
Probably closer to 30.
That's correct, and that weighed into the evaluation of the alternative.
Which is a huge burden on the street system on either side to try to eliminate the congestion, right?
At the same token, you're not taking 90, 90 homes and businesses.
Where are those 90 homes? I didn't think there was that much residential in that area.
I would have to go back to the final EIS, but that's what was slated.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, does anyone from the public want to comment on the study that was just presented? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is the ban on styrofoam usage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, since the council directed us to draft an ordinance banning disposable polystyrene food service ware in June, we have done that, but we've also learned some more things about the issue because people from the chemical and container industry contacted us immediately and so raised some issues about what one would actually be accomplishing with that kind of a ban, what are the impacts of some of the alternative products that one could use. And we also had a contact from a company that would like to talk to us about the possibility of recycling polystyrene products. We also spoke to the Restaurant Association, and they were receptive to the idea, and even suggested that the implementation period not be a full year, but only six months, and offered to help us with the education to the community. We still have some questions as to how we would enforce such an ordinance and how a process for granting hardship variances would go, and who would be responsible for that. We've also learned that there's recent case law which indicates that we might need to do some environmental review before adopting an ordinance that bans the product, at least an initial study and possibly even environmental impact report. So, we are presenting the council with a draft ordinance as you requested in June. And we also have some questions for you to help us as we go forward with this, or not. Because the first question is, does the council still want to pursue an ordinance banning polystyrene foodware in Newport Beach? If so, does the council want to spend the money to do environmental review on an ordinance before it goes through the approval process? And what should the ordinance include in its ban? Should it be just polystyrene for locally packaged foods for sale, which is the way the ordinance is drafted at this point? Should it also include retail or wholesale sale of styrofoam cups and plates and possibly even packing materials? Should it also include other kinds of disposable food service ware that is composed of non-recyclable products? And should staff be pursuing talks with Dart Corporation, who's the company that has contacted us about recycling polystyrene?
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Well, maybe before we start talking about it, it looks like there's some people in the audience that might want to say a few things. Why don't we hear from them, hear what they have to say? So I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone wants to get up and say anything.
Will there be a second round of public comments? Because after we make comments...
Sure.
Okay.
Good afternoon, members of the council and staff. My name is Matthew Dodson. I represent the California Grocers Association. We're an organization that's statewide, and we represent 500 different store operators throughout the state, as well as several hundred wholesalers and other specialty businesses associated with the grocery industry. Our association does have some concerns with this draft ordinance as it is currently worded. We are particularly concerned with fresh meat, fish, and poultry containers being included within this. And it's, I guess I'm not 100% clear whether or not that would be included in the ordinance as it's currently worded, but it appears to include that. If that is the case, then we're very concerned about the impact that would have on our retailers. There are certain unique qualities about fresh meat and fish and poultry, and the way it's packaged, that we believe presents a problem both from health and safety aspect, as well as aesthetics and durability of that packaging. Oftentimes, households will purchase a meat item, keep it in the refrigerator for several days. And we've looked at other alternatives, and I know staff did some research on that. In particular, with meat, fish, and poultry, we're concerned that that packaging essentially will break down. We haven't found anything that's comparable that will stand out the same way that ESP does. And that's why it's used so much throughout the grocery industry. So that's our concern. I hope you address it. As far as the other areas that would be, that would affect our retailers, such as cups and plates, those sorts of things, we feel our retailers can find other ways of working around that. So...
Question?
Yes.
Meat, fish, and poultry. I know that some markets, not a lot of them, but a few of them, are putting other things there. You can think of broccoli in your styrofoam thing. That would not have the same level of concern as...
That's correct. Our position is, is we can find alternative means for packaging fresh vegetables, deli items, whatever it is. But with fresh meat, fish, and poultry, we're very concerned just about that narrow point.
Okay.
So, for clarification, does the ordinance as presently drafted prohibit the use of ESP for, for example, sale of hamburger in a service meat department?
It does if it's packaged locally. So it would exempt the kind of meat products that are packaged in some central facility and then shipped to Newport Beach grocers.
Many of the, many of the meat products are packaged by the retailers in the store itself. So you're saying, you're saying that they would not be able to use it?
Correct.
I thought we were just doing this for takeout foods.
No, it was food packaging materials, locally packaged food.
What is the impact that we're trying to address? Is that, that this polystyrene is found in the environment, you know, through littering and gets into the storm drain system? Is that, is that the impact that we're trying to address?
That's not the only impact, because I think that there are points, that there are no packaging materials that do not have an environmental impact, just as, I mean, we all have our footprint, and that's just one of the things. But, one of the big issues with particularly these kind of plastics is that we don't find this huge sink in the middle of the Pacific Ocean of paper bags. It's plastics because, and that has been one of the big concerns, that this and the pre-production plastics and things. So, it isn't simply a matter, we don't, when we passed the thing on cigarette butts, no smoking on our beaches, we knew that wasn't the last cigarette butt we'd see on our beach, but it was a step forward. So yes, it is partly the concern of getting into the system, but it's a much bigger system that plastics in particular are having an impact on. And I'm sure we'll hear from the plastic industry to contradict me on that.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name's Samantha Martinez, and I represent the Plastic Food Service Packaging Group. And I'm not going to contradict much of what you said, but I do want to just let you know that, that our members, our manufacturers of a variety of different products, food service packaging products made of all different types of plastics, not just polystyrene and paper and aluminum, et cetera, and degradables. And, and our members are very concerned and, and share your interest in reducing litter and waste and reducing what goes into the marine system and also are very concerned about getting stuff out of landfills and working on recycling, et cetera. But we believe that solutions should not focus on just one material. We think a, a problem of litter is a problem of litter and, and replacing one material with another material, even one that we make, isn't going to solve the problem. So we want to work with you and look at different ways to reduce litter and to increase recycling. And we think that a ban might not be the best solution. And, and in the staff report, there's, there's a lot of good material. And one thing that, that we've seen other cities have banned, but none of them have any data that, that there's been a reduction of litter or even polystyrene in the, in the litter. So we, we want to move forward on some, some good solutions. I would also say that, that there are consequences. As, as I think the councilwoman pointed out, this polystyrene foam cup compared to this paper, polycoded paper cup, which has a lot of plastic or wax, depending on which one you have in it, this uses fifty percent less energy to make and produces fifty percent less greenhouse gases when it's made and uses two times less than material. So there's environmental consequences no matter which product you're using. Another exciting thing is, is that some folks are now recycling polystyrene. They take polystyrene, whether it's the packaging or the food packaging, they crush it up, they clean it, and they make it back into pellets. And then they make green building material out of it. So it's an emerging market, there's a lot going on, and we would just encourage you to work with Dart or others on collecting recycling. You could always ban at some point if that doesn't turn out to be a solution, but you might come up with a win-win. Because as I said before, a ban doesn't reduce the amount of litter, it doesn't reduce the amount of food service that's being used. And so I don't really think you're going to see the environmental benefit that, that you might initially think. This is a very complicated issue and the solutions are not as easy as we would always like. So I'll, I'll just leave you with that we want to work with you, we want to come up with solutions. I can share with you, I don't know if, if you want any more material, but we have an environmental report that shows the impacts on manufacturing and some solutions. So I could hand it to somebody. And then have it answered.
I have a brief question. Have you ever participated in a coastal cleanup day?
Yes. I live in Los Angeles, I've done some in Santa Monica and along the river.
And what percentage of the stuff you were cleaning up was styrofoam or poly?
Well, I can't say what particularly I did, but I know that they say that cigarette butts are number one, and then plastic pieces are number two, and then polystyrene is in either number two or number three.
In our upper bay, the days that I participated, I would say probably ninety-five percent of what you take out is the remains, and you can't pick up the little round modules that have, have broken down and are just laying there. So it's, in my opinion, it's a significant impact on the areas like the upper bay.
Councilman Hen?
I, I am fortunate enough to live on the beach and would echo that comment as it relates to the ocean from the standpoint that there's a significant difference between paper products and let's even as to hard-packed plastic products and that the polystyrene breaks up. It becomes very hard to even clean up. And there isn't a day that goes by, I don't see hundreds of examples of polystyrene just walking up and down the boardwalk or even in front of my house. So there is a significant difference.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Gabe, anyone else?
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Scott Morland. I teach up at Newport Harbor and I've been here with all my kids from my environmental surf class. They put forward this measure several months ago. We've actually been working on this for years and years because when we do beach cleanups, as Councilwoman Webb and Councilwoman Zansky echo, it absolutely is a huge problem. And it's a problem that just will not go away. Every ounce of styrofoam that was ever made is still in existence, it is not going to biodegrade. There are other alternatives, other cities are doing this. It's a step, it is not a total solution, but it is a step in the right direction. And I would sure love to see Newport leading, you know, being on the leading edge of this because, you know, somebody's got to take a stand and this is just, it's a travesty to our beaches, to your community. As a tourist attraction, it's really a shame with what floats in. I'm down at the beach teaching surfing, I have the beach cleanups down at the River Jetties, I have the surf team down at Fifty-Sixth Street and styrofoam products. And it's, it's just a problem, a problem all year long, no matter what time of year. It's an ongoing problem that I would just love to see solved. I think we've, you know, done the study, we've talked about it. You know, I would sure love to see it taken forward from this point. Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Gabe, bring it back for discussion. Councilwoman Gardner?
I don't want to vilify the, the plastics industry at all, but this is a concern. It's more than just what's on the beach, as I say. It's what's in the claws of birds, it's what's in that, that huge eddy out in, in the ocean. And we had, Surf Rider had a girl, six or seven years ago, a twelve-year-old girl, did this study of pre-production plastics at the mouth of the San Ana River. She won a national award for it eventually. But this is not a new issue. And, and I think we accomplished a couple of things by doing this. I think we, we do make a statement. And we're, we've always tried to be a leader in environmental issues, particularly when it concerns our beaches and our water quality. And I think that by passing ordinances like this, we also say to the plastics industry, look, you've really got to come up with some things. I, I'm perfectly willing, when they have better products, that we would use them and when they have better methods, that's it. But, but it's this kind of pressure that gets more activity. We were not hearing anything of this five years ago when nobody was thinking of, of any kind of, of ordinance. So I would urge us, I mean, I was delighted with the Restaurant Association saying, hey, we can do it in six months, that's great. I would love to see that, that our, also our students, and that's not the only reason to pass it, but I would love to see our students see that, that activism really pays off with some activity on the part of the city council.
Okay, Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I, I echo Councilmember Gardner's comments. And while I can't speak for the impact in our, in our landfills about reduction in polystyrene, I'm not surprised that there's no measurable benefit of reduction in styrene, polystyrene litter on our beaches because I think there's somewhere in here, it's a, we'd be the twenty-eighth city to adopt such a ban. There's hundreds and thousands of jurisdictions that really need to do this before I can imagine that there would be a significant measurable reduction. As it relates to the grocery industry, I could picture where it might be difficult with meat, poultry, and fish to find a substitute product that works as well. And my guess is that the containers for those types of products that are sold are much less likely to wind up on our beaches and floating around in our rivers and so forth. So I guess just to sort of advance the ball a little bit, wouldn't bother me if our ordinance exempted those products in supermarkets, well, I guess any food service operation, but I would think principally just supermarkets. I wouldn't mind that.
For those specific food products, the, the fresh meat, fresh fish, and fresh poultry?
Uncooked. Because I think it would be.
Raw, okay. Fresh, fresh could be a little.
Yeah, what we're interested in doing is, is not having a takeout. You say meat, vegetable that's sold in a grocery store, you could have something that's already prepared and that probably wouldn't sit in the refrigerator for three or four days.
Well, I, I did specifically say supermarkets because, for example, there might be sushi places, retail restaurant-oriented sushi places that would sell uncooked fish.
That's right.
And that's not what I got in mind. I think they need to find a different container than polystyrene. So it's really basically supermarkets where you're just selling raw product in bulk.
Okay, Councilman Curry?
Well, I share my colleagues' concerns about this issue and about the impact on our environment and how this works. But what I found intriguing as part of this discussion going forward is that there are emerging technologies for the recycling of polystyrene. I see Mr. Choi in the audience, can I invite him to the, to the podium to, to share some thoughts? And I, I believe we need to sort of think about how we're moving forward here, but I'm in concurrence, I think, with my colleague, Councilmember Gardner. But Mr. Choi, who is with Dart Industries, has suggested to the city that they have technology that enables polystyrene to be recycled, which I certainly think moves the ball in a, in a very big way for the entire Orange County community over and above what this ordinance might do for Newport Beach. So if I can indulge my council colleagues, I'd like to just like to ask Mr. Choi to describe this process, and then maybe ask Mr. Harmon to respond as to whether or not that's something that could be fit into what we do here at Newport Beach as an adjunct to what we're doing with this ordinance. Mr. Choi?
Thank you, Councilmember Curry, and thank you, honorable members of the city council. And we really are here just to find a solution. I think one of the great things about the polystyrene and, and manufacturing industry as a whole is that they are just looking at the big picture, environmental sustainability. And the reality is, in this today's marketplace, we know that the consumer products, we talked about it, from coffee cups to what you find in the grocery stores, that is a reality with styrofoam and polystyrene products. I think we're, we're interacting with them on a daily basis. I know every morning I see styrofoam cups in, in our kitchen, I see, you know, take-out containers in our refrigerators, and it's just a reality. Now, how do we deal with the behavioral issues? Obviously, we talked about, you know, anti-litter and we'd be happy to work with you on that. But specific to Councilman Curry, one of the, one of the neat things that our company is doing is really taking this product and making it into palatable, post-consumer recyclable goods. And our good colleague Samantha Martinez mentioned some of those products that it turns into, which is green building products, and that's a reality. And we would love to work with the city. In fact, we have a program up in the city of Roseville in the Sacramento area where they accept both food packaging products and shape and molded products. So those are the packaging products that, that, you know, pack your, your TV, your computer screen and whatnot and break it down. There's a, a machine called a densifier that compacts it down. Literally, you see piles highs of, of styrofoam cups, that could be four thousand cups that are this high, and it densifies it down to a forty-pound bag. And so it's a remarkable process. We would love to work with the city on that. That densifier would be on loan, on lease to you for, for no cost. And, you know, we just see an opportunity here, given, you know, this is a real sophisticated, cutting-edge city here on the coast. And I would just frankly challenge you to take a look at, at an opportunity outside the box as opposed to the simple way of looking at a ban. Now, if this recycling program doesn't give it time to grow, give it time to, to become something that becomes an embedded part of your mainstream community here, but if it doesn't grow into a, a palatable solution, then by all means, look at a ban.
I would disagree. I think it's great to recycle and I encourage us to recycle. I mean, we're certainly not banning all polystyrene because there will be packing products and everything else in the city. But food is a whole different thing. To recycle those is very difficult. As I say, they break up so quickly, you take them to the beach, they're, they're shredded in no time at all. And those are the kind of things that are not going to get recycled. I certainly would love to have the city cooperate with you in recycling other kinds of polystyrene, but not in, not as an alternative to the proposed ordinance.
I appreciate it.
How would that work on a practical basis? I read in the material that was given us.
Yes.
It has to be cleaned and all these other things. I mean, how are you going to clean it, collect it in any kind of reasonable manner and to get it to the point where you can recycle it?
Well, essentially, I, I. And I, and I apologize, Councilmember, I've been six days on a job, so I'm learning as I go here. And I'm not the recycling expert, I'm more of a legislative guy, so I, I apologize here. But, you know, we can bring in our resident expert, Michael Westerfield, to, to break it down for you. But kind of in a nutshell, there are facilities that accept it. And let's say from the start, your, your residents put it in a blue bin, which is, separates it out as food packaging, polystyrene products, or they can co-mingle it with their other recycling products and then take it to a manufact, facility where they, they separate it out. And then it goes through a process of either being cleaned at this fight and, and separated out, and then the densifier densifies it down, and then it gets shipped to Timbron, which is up in, in Stockton, is, is a prime example of using this material for green building products for the crown molding and other molding products within the home building industry as a whole. So we're seeing that in, in reality. That's kind of in a nutshell of how it works. And in addition, you can also have facilities, drop-off facilities for your constituents throughout the city. And it could even be on the beach and, and something that we can work with you to have them right there on the beach in the city beach limits. Or you can have them right here at City Hall and, or viable locations, public, public places throughout the city where they can drop off the polystyrene as long as it has the, the rotating arrow, triangle arrow with the number six on the bottom, that's what we accept and, and then off we go in, in recycling the goods.
Yeah, well, it sounds, sounds awfully cumbersome and.
Well, and, and you're right.
Like Councilwoman Gardner said, you know, it's, it's easier to ban it to begin with than to go through that very long, cumbersome, sounds like a very costly process.
Well, you're absolutely right, Councilmember. That's one of the great things about Dart is that, you know, we're going to incur the cost of this. There is, it's not a cost benefit to the company, but we're doing it because it's the right thing to do because we're trying to find some long-term solutions around the corner. Because we understand the reality is, if the product is here today and bans could continually happen, but the product is, is a viable way of life for many of us. And so we're looking for an avenue to say, how can we be part of solution? It's, it is, it is a profit-loss center at the end of the day, frankly, the recycling program. And we're, and, you know, frankly, we are willing to take that opportunity to say, this is the right thing to do for the long term.
I, I absolutely agree as far as our televisions and things, can I, I mean, you unpack or go to IKEA, the amount of styrofoam you have after you, after you've unpacked something. That sort of thing to me seems like it's just set up for some kind of recycling program. But as I say, I see this, the other is our ordinance is affecting something different that would not be applicable.
Councilman Hen?
I guess I, I don't see this as mutually exclusive, ban or recycle. I see both having a benefit to the community, and so I'm enthusiastic about your ideas. But one of the things that's a real advantage here in Newport Beach is that our residential trash, we don't have separate recycling containers because it's recycled at a central facility. And so I suggest that you start calling on CRNR and, I don't know, I guess it's CRNR. So you can call on CRNR and CRNR and I'd see if you can identify an already centralized collection point for what could be a considerable amount of recyclable property, uh, uh, material that maybe would make it profitable, who knows?
Well, Councilman Hen, in response to that, I understand that there's a company called PDR that actually has a facility up in Santa Ana currently right now. So that could be a viable alternative or, you know, location for this recycling drop-off once it comes to the city and then goes to, we ship it out to, over to the facility in Santa Ana.
I would just say, and I, I agree with Ed, I, this was not an alternative to the ordinance, I think we actually need to do the ordinance. But I was very intrigued by Mr. Choi's advancing the ball on the technology here to recycle what has otherwise been assumed to be a non-recyclable product. We have a lot of, I, I think all of our non-exclusive commercial contractors have their own MRF facilities and have the ability to separate out various waste. And to the extent that we can be helpful in facilitating that, to further reduce what goes in the landfill to meet our state obligations, I think that's certainly appropriate and we appreciate the offer to, to do that, even though probably we're not getting there in the way that you might want us to do.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. The staff has asked us four questions here in seeking direction, I think we're pretty well answered. Number one, that we want to continue with the ordinance. I think the, you know, the second question is dealing with the environmental review and whether we want to proceed as we had intended and that some cities are proceeding in the report and taking their chances on the environmental aspects of it or going ahead and getting into a whole environmental review process for this ordinance. Any thoughts on that?
What kind of dollars are we looking at if we do an EIR on something like this? Do you know? Have any idea? We've never done something like this before, have we? We've never done something like this before, have we?
Not on something like this. I don't see David Leefo in the audience for a cost of a recent EIR.
Hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say a hundred, but doubtful we'd have traffic analysis.
I mean, my thoughts are, it's a legislative act. I think there's enough cities in here that are pursuing it, and I, you know, I think we ought to just go ahead and if someone wants to challenge us on it, deal with it at that point in time. That's kind of my thoughts. Anybody disagree?
No.
Okay, then the third question is, they've given us three alternatives on the, what we include in the ordinance, the level that we have in the draft ordinance before us, then going to retail or wholesale sale of styrofoam cups in place within the city limits, and then going to disposable food service ware composed of other non-recyclable materials. Any thoughts on that?
I think that we were clear about wanting to make an exemption for the raw meat product, meat, fish, and poultry products.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I would say, we continue on the path that we have now with that exemption.
To add a little finer point on that, I suppose you could say not intended for immediate consumption or something like that to get us past the retail sushi-type sale of raw product.
And then the last question is, should the staff pursue talks with Dart Corporation? I don't think anyone has any objections to them pursuing a separate program and talking with our staff on that. Okay, does anyone else in the public want to comment on this item before we move on?
Did I miss it, or did you give us direction on whether we should include other non-recyclable materials?
No.
Does somebody, oh.
Stay with the ordinance.
What's this going to do for me?
Are you going to control the computer?
I don't want to do that, that's all right. Good afternoon, my name is Nancy Skinner, I live in Newport Beach, and I thought you were on a time-certain start. I'm sorry I was late in arriving. But I do support the idea of banning the styrofoam, and they take out restaurants and other things that you're considering. I'm, it sounds like you are getting ready to do that. I was going to say, if I needed to talk you into it, I was going to kind of say, my mother always told me, if everybody else is not doing it right, that doesn't mean that I shouldn't. So, and I really appreciate what this city has done over the years, being in the forefront of water quality issues in many, many areas. And I do think this is another area that we can be pretty much in the forefront, even though a few cities have already done that. I would appreciate it very much if you would support the ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just one other quick comment. I do want to compliment the Restaurant Association here in Newport Beach for taking an enlightened attitude toward this. I was very pleased to see that, so.
I think there's a student or something.
I would just say, as the student comes down, you know, they did get to learn Activism 101, and kudos to Councilwoman Gardner for driving the issue.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. I'm Ariel Cosby, I'm a student at Newport Harbor High School, and I'm just here, once again, to urge you to make this ban happen. It's really important for our city, and it's just, it's the right step to do. So many other places have done it, and it's just, it's time for us to do this for us and for the environment, and for, you know, for our health and for the health of future generations, so, thank you.
Thank you.
One of the lessons that you'll learn is that it takes sometimes longer than you expect.
Nothing's easy.
And then, Ed?
Okay, Councilman Curry?
And then just to add that, in addition to the ordinance, I would like to see sort of as a code of this, an analysis of enhancing our recycling capability for those polystyrene products that are not subject to this ban, like electronics packaging and the like that Councilmember Gardner referenced.
Okay. Thank you all very much, students, thank you for coming down. Next item on our agenda is the capital improvement program mapping application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Bateman in Public Works is going to tell you about what they're working on with CIP mapping project.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Dave, Mayor, members of council. We're real excited about this. This is, I think, something that you've all been asking for regarding real-time information that can be on the web, regarding our capital projects, regarding schedule costs, and any other bits of information the public or yourselves might want regarding our capital improvement program. It also dovetails very nicely into our benchmarking process, where we're going to be able to use this hard data to really see how are we doing, you know, performance-wise? What are, what kind of costs are we incurring, and how long is it taking us to deliver things? And I think you're going to be very pleased on how that is working out with us. So I will turn that over to Jamie Pollard, who's the team leader on this, and she can introduce the rest of the team.
Mayor Salich and councilmembers, I'm Jamie Pollard, and I'm equally excited to be here because this is really a neat tool that will help residents and anyone who's interested in the projects that are going on in our city to see with a few clicks of a mouse and internet connection what's really going on. In the past year, we've been striving in our department to align our resources, such as funding and staffing, with our mission, which is to protect and provide quality public improvements and services for the people of Newport Beach with organizational tools such as training procedures, communications, and performance measurement objectives. Right now, we have 24 projects in construction in Newport Beach with 140 in the wings in a planning or design stage valued at more than $84 million. That's a whole lot going on in 25 square miles. This new mapping application represents an additional way to communicate to our residents and our businesses what's going on in the city. And in a few minutes, I'm going to show you a quick tour of the application and answer any questions that you have on it. But first, I want to recognize our team that put this together for us. First, there's Ryan Stottlemann, who created the GIS interface for this project. Wei Ning Su developed the back-end databases, collecting all the data for the project. Mary Losi, who's assisting me here to the right, she did all the project management and information management, and really contributed greatly to getting this all in one place. Dave Webb and his team, and Dave's right behind me, they provided the up-to-date information without which this would be useless. And Steve Bateman, Paul Malcomas, and Jackie Loengas Awafi provided the management support that we needed to move forward. The mapping application is available at the city's website at www.city.nuport-beach.ca.us. And if you type in that address, you get to the city's front page. If you go to departments, the mapping application is in Public Works, and you can either go to the left-hand side where it's listed as a word, or you can click on the Public Works box on the right-hand side. Right now, we have it as a link to our logo, which is the racing flags logo for Public Works Department, and then the next day or so, we'll have an actual title that will let the public have access to it as well. When you go there, what you're going to see in a few minutes is that we kept the interface very simple so that it was user-friendly for folks to be able to navigate. At the top, we have a couple of icons to the left that allow a person to change the view that they're in. So say if you're looking up close in a project, the worldview will get you back to this current view that you see here, and it has a back and forward button. The help button's off to the right, there's a help guide that will show anyone in real easy pictures and words how to use this mapping. And you can always go back to the home city website by clicking sitting home, or clicking onto Public Works, and that will take you back a screen. The column to the left shows our projects that you can toggle. It'll always default to what's currently in construction, so the red dots there represent what's currently in construction throughout the city. If you toggle on planning, design, or closeout, you will then see all approximately 200 projects up on the screen, and it takes a few seconds for it to refresh, and you'll see the blue dots or the blue pushpins that will represent those projects that are designed presently, that are waiting to be in construction. And the same with planning or closeout. At the top of that column, there's a search by project title. So say you don't know where the location of a project is, but you know the name of it or the street that it represents, you can go to, say, West Cliff Street Lighting, and at the bottom of the list will be W for West Cliff. And there you can hit Find. And any projects that you look in your search, it will keep on your desktop right there. So say if you're interested in five or six or 10 projects that you're going in and out of, it will keep that there until you hit a Clear All button. So if you, you can either see the green flag that seems to be jumping right there, you can click on that, or you can click on the blue underline in the left-hand column. And once you click on one of those names, West Cliff Street Light Replacement Project, what you will see is general information, which includes the project description and who to contact with links to their emails. So if you wanted to email the project manager directly, you can send off an email immediately or the project inspector. It also has whatever documents that we have available at the time. So in this case, we have a location map. Say if you wanted to see up close detailed location map of what's actually being planned for this project, it will pull up another document, and it will show you the streets that are specifically impacted by this construction work. And these, each of these windows are separate windows, so you can close out of them without getting too far back. Also, there's-
Quick question?
Yes.
Back on the map that had the pushpins, can you also push on a pushpin, and that will take you, if you knew the location?
Yes, if you push on the pushpin, you push on the pushpin, and it'll pull up the name, and then you click on the name. So you always want to click on the name. And then likewise, we have a detailed schedule that's related to this project that is more than the schedule that's going to follow down below, that I'll show you in a minute. So it shows you which streetlights and which street areas are going to be impacted by the work and what the estimated start and completion dates are. So the next section, it has budget information, and in the budget information and the schedule information, there are colors associated with the schedule and the budget. And we wanted to make it at a glance that you can see without reading or going too much in further detail, is it on time, is it on budget? Or is it in a yellow light where maybe there's some delays in timing or money? Or if it's in red, that designates on the budget category that it's over 25% the council policy level that would require further action by council. If it's scheduled, it exceeds six months beyond the estimated scheduled completion date. So here we can see on the West Cliff Street Lighting Project, it has a current budget of $998,000. It was awarded a construction project for 680. Currently, it's still at 680, there haven't been any changes to it, so it's right where it should be. If there were changes, we would add changes to that so that you could see it, and it designates by the color green that it's on budget. For the schedule information, we also use the red light, green light, and yellow light designation for easy information. And we also include a detailed activity log that as you're making approvals or actions on the project, you'll see what's been done either by council approval, what the bidding is, what the schedules are. And here, we've got two scheduled dates. We have the July 1st schedule. At the beginning of our budget, we've developed the schedule, and it says what is anticipated for this year. And we're, we put the October 1st schedule, just to show you, I know it's a week away, but we put all the October 1st schedules for the projects that are in the system, and this project happens to be on schedule. We're going to go to another project that's not on schedule, so you can see what that looks like, and that's the Balboa Island Water Project. And so you see West Cliff is on the bottom of your list, now you have Balboa Island Water Project at the top of your list, so if you wanted to go back to West Cliff, you could very easily. But here, when we click on this project, it's the same information for general information, budget information, but when you go down to schedule, you can see on the revised schedule, we don't have any council actions yet on this project. We had an anticipated schedule as of July 1st, and for the October 1st update, we're letting you know that the schedule's been adjusted because there's been a delay in the design of another project that's related to this project. So if there's information that's, that can be conveyed, we'll share that with you. If it's on time and it has the same schedule as before, the existing July 1st schedule will prevail, and it'll say project is on schedule.
Jamie, question for you.
Sure.
How kind of nimble is this mapping application? Can you just sort of hit schedule, and that would generate all the projects and their schedule?
Not yet. I mean, right now, we're developing a platform to get a reaction to see if this is the type of information that we want to see visible. And one of the things that I will touch on is the report that we gave you a sample of. I'll review what some of our reporting ideas are for the future, but we're in a development phase, and we want this to line up with the performance measurement and benchmarking process, which is still in development. So we're running parallel timelines and paths to make sure that our resources are in alignment for both projects. And right now, this is information that we have available, and we do see filters to be available down the road, and we'll have other versions of this mapping system introduced as we know those questions are desired. And I was going to show you another project, but the other project that is, if there were a delay in the projects, such as it had a yellow light for, or it was not yellow, maybe it was yellow light, was, I was saying? But like the Back Bay Science Center that was completed last year, it has a red for budget because of the Osprey situation and the administration building. So sometimes there are situations when we'll have a red light that is out of our control, but we'll have information in the activity log or on this program so that you can see why something is off base. We won't just say that this is red or this is yellow, and not everything is green. So the projects have been updated with their colors as well. Now, so that one's yellow, and that one was the Balboa? Okay. So the Back Bay, the Back Bay Science Center ended up being somewhere between 10% and 25% when it was finally completed. Now, the question about what can we do with the system outside of just look at the projects and see the information, we've got a very powerful database that's supporting a lot more information in the background than what's displayed here. And with that information, we created a sample construction report so that it can demonstrate the type of information that we can pull from the system to give to you on a variety of questions, if it were scheduled alone, if it were by project manager or by area, or whatever the filter would be. This one happens to be, you have two reports in front of you, one is for fiscal year '07-'08, and one is for the first quarter of '08-'09. And it shows all projects on one page as the completions, and one page is what's currently in construction as of the date of the report. So if you look at, say, the September 23rd report, which is first quarter of this year, this fiscal year, the completions, we have seven projects that have already been completed and accepted by the city council. It shows when it was planned to start, when it was awarded, when it was planned to complete, when it substantially completed, and how many months off schedule or on schedule those projects were completed. And in this case, we had several projects that were completed ahead of schedule, one project that was completed right on time, and one project that was completed six months behind schedule. And on average, that's just a .14 variance for these seven projects, which is approximately a week behind schedule if we looked at an average. Same with the contract. It shows the awarded contract value, the final contract value, and the variance of what that project completed at. And we have two projects that completed over 10%, which is our designation of what's on budget, which is within council policy. And so there's notations off to the side just to remind the reader of this report what the issues were that contributed to a higher cost value at the end of the project. a higher cost value at the end of the project. So, on, on these seven projects, we completed on average 13 percent over our contract award value. On the flip side, it shows what's currently in construction. It has the same information, and the amended contract value shows the awarded contract value plus any change orders to date. So, you can see if anything is moving towards becoming expensive or things that may be actually becoming more cost beneficial. Like, the third one down is a citywide slurry seal program project. And we already can project that that project's gonna come in under budget because of the quantities that were related to that project. So, that shows a negative cost, that it will actually end up under budget. And on average, for the 24 projects that are represented there, we're under budget over the contract value that was awarded at the time of the, of the construction award. And on, we're pretty much on time on most of our projects. We're about two weeks out on average if, if that's, if that's considered off schedule. So, that just demonstrates what we can do in the future with this type of database and the power that it has to produce management reports that can come through the city manager's office to you, and it doesn't have to be presented every time unless you wanna see me again. But we're really excited about this program. We're real excited about the partnership that IT and Public Works did to get to this place. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions? Councilman Hen?
No, well, no questions particularly, but I, this is a heck of a great product that you've produced here, and it looks to me like it should be able to capture basically all the performance measurement issues that you wanna get at if you're able to access your database correctly. I assume this is a database application that you'll be able to do that with, and so, that's great. I would suggest, as you're thinking about this and when you're thinking about doing summary reporting, there's a couple of ways to look at this. You can look at it by class as of completion date. For example, all projects completed in 2006, false, it's done in 2000. You can look at it that way, and I can imagine why you might want to. And then you can also look at it by project inception date. Those projects inceptioned, if that's a word, in 2004, and 2005, and 2006, and s, and look at it that way. And it can start to give you a feeling, are we doing better or worse? You know, what's, what's contributing to these trends that we're seeing? What you need to be able to get to is trend line analysis here, in addition to your snapshot analysis. And so, but I, I don't see any impediments that should prevent you from being able to do that. This is terrific.
Thank you.
Councilman Curry?
Yeah, I also want to congratulate Jamie, you, and the Public Works staff. This is a, really a great management tool, and, you know, it shows that we're going in the right direction on being able to get a good handle on our data, being able to measure our performance, and being able to deliver our projects faster and, and better. And congratulations for, I think, really a job well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Your report, Jim Diggle?
I know, you know, the council's being asked, you know, why are you doing this benchmarking? And, and so, we also, also always have to demonstrate value. And from what you're saying, that the data-driven management, you know, is demonstrating value in terms of your day-to-day work. Now, I know you're kinda asking us for direction, but I'd like to ask you, as the day-to-day manager, you know, what is your vision as far as where you need to see, you know, this data gathering going, and what additional support would be helpful from the council?
I think I can answer that. I, I think that, you know, we're, we're real excited about this, this, this program. The, you know, the way it's been configured with the help of IT and our staff, it's very flexible, and we can use it in a lot of different ways. It's information that's already there. I mean, it's information that we've had. When we bring you a NOSA completion, we, we give you the whole story, you know, what happened with the project, what were the change orders, what were the, the timing, the costs. But this puts it in a format where you can really see what's going on. And as the, on the webpage, that'll be real-time, it'll be updated. As we get new information, our, our, our staff will be updating, putting new entries on every project as we get that information. And then the idea would be that we very, it's very easily, once it's in the system, we can generate these quarterly reports to give you just about any kind of information you'd want. And as, as Councilman Hen mentioned, we can manipulate that data, look back in the past. We can, we can certainly use it for comparison purposes and, and look for trends. That's what we're really excited about with this. And, and really, there was a lot of effort on the, on the part of our staff initially, but I think in ongoing, Jamie assures me that it's, that it won't be too much work. It's stuff we're doing anyway. It's stuff we need to know.
Yeah, it looks pretty cool. What, what is it gonna take to maintain this, to keep it up to date? Because that's what's, you know, looks great now, but, you know, every month, I suppose it's gonna take so many man-hours to maintain the system and keep it going. Has anyone looked at that?
We, we are already doing that. So, if you look at any of the project, there's already history that's being created and documented. So, every time a council takes action, we may have five to 10 to 20 reports at a council meeting that same week. That information's updated on the system, and it, it's transferred right live, so it doesn't require any cut, any time delay. Once a quarter, our engineering projects team prepares updates on schedule, so they're looking at in-depth schedule changes and adjustments. And we've, we've had one quarter change already this year. All those updates are already in. So, it was relatively easy to, to get those updates on there because we're already doing that work, as, as Steve had said. But now we have it all in one place so that it has a home to, to have some relation to, to one another of the information.
So, do you guys input it, or do you just put it all together and get it to the IT people, and they do the input?
What's really cool about this program is that we used an existing software and adapted it to our use. So, Wei Ning was very essential in getting something that we're already familiar with, that we can log into. And if we know something, as, as Steve has said, if there's something that's urgent, that needs to be up there, there is an emergency traffic delay on a, on a project, we can get those maps on there. And this won't be the only means of communication to residents. It's just another avenue of communicating. So, if we send an E-select out to folks that are subscribed, they would know to go to this location for, for immediate information on an issue if, if one comes up. So far, our, our projects are in a, in a pretty even flow, so we haven't had any urgent-type nature information.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hen?
Yeah, a, a quick question. How, how far back does your database currently go?
Last fiscal year moved forward.
Okay, so you don't have history now in the database that goes back six, seven, eight years?
Correct.
From projects. So, you're just, you're gonna be creating that as you go by. As time goes by, you'll be able to have a long-term database.
And there's so many search capabilities. We can search by street, we can search by council district, we can search by type of project. If we're looking at all water quality projects, or all street projects.
Right.
So, we were very intentional about how we separated the data so that it was going to anticipate any future questions that may come forward.
Okay. And then, of course, the, the real issue, and I'm sure you either have or are tackling that, is the, the database management protocols here. Who's authorized to make an update? How often do they have to make the update? You know, what's, what's the standard by which they'll be judged on that? And so, I'm sure you'll work all that out. But that's, that's part of the stuff that's, you know, think about it. As you start these things, it's really important to keep it up to date and accurate. I'd just add one more quick comment. I would take the as-of data off the column header and put it up here on your report header.
Okay.
It's kind of confusing.
Okay.
To have it in that column.
Any other comments, your questions? Anybody from the public want to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Good job, Jamie.
Good work.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Okay, any public com-
And the rest, and all you guys out there, too.
All I meant, everybody. Any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session.